Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March 31st, 2025, under legislation enacted on March 29th, 2023. The statute, Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with correspondence.
An email from Ms. Kate Haber, received on February 19th, 2025, providing a link to an article in the Jewish American Committee website.
Thank you. We have a recommended motion for minutes.
I move the school committee approve the minutes to the February 25th, 2025, school committee as meeting as presented. Sorry.
We have a motion and we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Adam?
Yay.
Estelle?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. That brings us to public speak. We do not have anybody here or online, correct? Nobody's joining? Okay. All right, so that brings us to school committee announcements and recognitions. School committee chair report. Just a reminder that the June elections are coming up quickly. Anyone who is interested in joining us here on school committee, we have three seats that are open, two seats that are three-year positions, and one that is a two-year position. And completed nomination forms must be returned to the town clerk by no later than April 15th, Tuesday, April 15th. You can find out more about how to get those papers on the LongMeadow.gov website. Other committee announcements or recognitions? Seeing none, we'll head into administrative reports. Dr. O'Shea?
No report this evening.
No report this evening. Other administrative reports. And I think for that one, we are welcoming Karyazari. Come on up.
So, as our Director of Student and Family Support, Nilda Erzary, gets settled, and we welcome her to the meeting. Nilda is here with you this evening to present the findings of a DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, review of our ELL practices. And this is an area of responsibility that falls on Nilda's crowded plate. And so, we're grateful that she led us through this very thorough audit. And it'd be a good opportunity for us to explain the findings of that audit, but also to help us, help the community understand how we try to support our English language learners. So, if I could confirm with Estelle, and Michaela, and Adam, that you can see the slides?
Yeah, I can see it. It was learning for a second.
Okay. All right, so I'll turn it over to Nilda to walk us through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education review. And again, express my gratitude to Nilda for leading us through that thorough review. It's a good opportunity for us to sort of hold a mirror up to our practices and learn how we can improve based on feedback from the state. So, Nilda, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, and I want to start off just by thanking Dr. O'Shea for supporting our English language learners, and thanking the school committee for their recent approval of the Point 5, so that we could help keep English language learner caseloads smaller and provide that individualized support. We were able to provide that support at Wolf Swamp Elementary School, so thank you for that. The first thing I just want to share is what our model is. So, we believe that immersion is the best way for students to learn language with their peers, with their educators. So, we have SEI-endorsed classroom teachers, and then we have targeted ESL instruction by a licensed ESL teacher. Our hope is that students spend the majority of the time in the classroom with their peers and their teachers. So, in Long Meadow, we have strategies that make the content accessible for all students. And then, there may be scaffolded lessons with visuals and targeted support where students are pulled out by their ELL teacher to offer some targeted instruction. The teachers offer some targeted academic goals, vocabulary goals, and they adjust the curriculum to accommodate. That's in alignment with our D cap. We offer translated services and materials to our students and to our families. And on the bottom is the graphic from DESI that really says we need to provide high-quality and rigorous instruction. So, this talks a little bit about that we view language as an asset-based lens, and so when students come in speaking another language, that adds some assets to the classroom, and they're learning English at the same time. It will be language-driven, scaffolded, and we want it to be interactive and collaborative. And while it is challenging for students to learn a new language, we still keep pushing those students, and they do reach high levels. So, what is a DESI audit? A DESI audit happens every six years, and they collected data from 12 of our students. So, that means they asked for a complete file review of all of the assessments that we had on these students, all of the documentation, since they arrived in Long Meadow Public Schools, and they wanted to see what their academic profile looks like, along with the supports that we gave them over time. Then, they had interviews. Some of the interviews were 30 minutes, some of them are up to 60 minutes. They interviewed three parents, two from, or one from the elementary school, one from the middle school, and one at the high school. They interviewed three administrators, again, the same elementary, middle, and high school. They interviewed all of our ELL teachers, including our coordinator, Janine Preston. They interviewed three classroom teachers, and obviously, they interviewed me for an hour. So, this is just to show you that they really did do a comprehensive look at our program, and they did speak to our stakeholders, along with review extensive documentation on each of our ELL students. After they interviewed our parents, our teachers, he, David Balday, who was our DESI auditor, said, "Did you stack the deck? Did you just, like, give me the very best in the..." I'm like, "No, we picked our three administrators. We picked three parents." And he said, "Because our parents are generally pleased with our program, and that our teachers were high-quality, our administrators were saying all the right things to support." So, I just felt reaffirmed that this is the right program that we're offering students, and everyone's in it to support all kids. So, in the compliance areas, there's 12 total. We were fully compliant in the ones that you see above, and then I'll go into a little more detail later. And then, we had some that were partially implemented, which means that there are some growth areas that they've outlined. The positive is there were no zero compliance areas, which means that we showed that we were in compliance with the majority of the standards. So, the fully compliant ones, I just have a few highlights. I don't want to read the whole thing. But the first big thing is that we offer the access assessment every year, and we send those, that's the language proficiency exam. We offer that each year, and then we send the results not only to parents, but we send them the results to teachers, so that we can see how students are growing in their language proficiency. And once they reach a certain level, they exit the ELL program supports, because we've been able to progress their language skills. The other pieces, they do take the same standardized metrics, like MCAS, and they meet the requirements, and they meet the progressive standards that we have for all kids, which is, again, excellent. Then, we do showcase exit criteria, and it is based on data. So, students who are exited from the program have shown proficiency and growth, and we continue to monitor them even after they exit the ELL program, because we want to be sure that they're successful in our schools. We offer follow-up support. We use data systems like Panorama and Power School to ensure that even though they aren't receiving the ELL support, they're still successful grade-wise in our program. Professional development. Beth Nelson partners with the Westfield University to ensure that teachers have the SEI endorsement and certification, and we offer that to our teachers. And we're consistently offering professional development to ensure that they can meet the needs of all of their learners. And then, our records were well-documented and well-maintained. So, each of the files that they requested of the 12 students had all of the documentation that the state requires on English language learners. In terms of improvement areas, there were some that they highlighted. The first one is part of our registration process, which I think every district could improve on. So, when we get a new family, it's assessing their home language survey, seeing what languages are spoken at home. And then, that child goes through a proficiency exam that we give here, and then we measure their language proficiency and share those scores out to their teachers. Some of the things that they notice is that when students register, they might be coming from another state. An example would be like California. They don't do the WIDA screener, and we have to redo the screener, even though California may have results, because the assessments that they give don't line up with the state of Massachusetts. So, that first bullet is really ensuring that our registration process is airtight, that all students are assessed when they enter our district, and that it's communicated to all stakeholders, their scores. Progress monitoring and support. This one is going to be bolstered and supported by our recent implementation of Panorama and Power School. So, for this metric, it means that we track student proficiency throughout the year. So, when they enter the program, they get a screener that gives them an initial language proficiency score. And then, we assess again in the spring with the access test. So, part of what the state is saying, that you need metrics in between those two assessments, one at the start of the year and one at the end of the year, to see how their language is developing. It'd be equivalent to if any of us spent 30 days in another country, we might pick up on some phrases, we might be very different in 30 days than we were when we first started. So, the state is really asking us for more frequent interim assessments. Translation and interpretation services. We do offer translation and interpretation services to our families. One of the things that they wanted to see expanded is for school-wide events, that could be for parent-teacher conferences, when we're sharing so many of the academic pieces about a child, that we would have a translator present. We do partner with Transfluency, and today, I did organize all of the translators that are required for the elementary conferences that are coming up, just to ensure that that's all set for our families. The next one is opting out. So, families that do enter our district can say, "I don't want a screener. I think my child is just fine with English proficiency, and I don't want my child to receive ELL services." It's in their rights to do that. When they opt out, initially, what we had been doing is they would opt out once, and we would say, "Oh, that opted them out from now until the time they graduate." What the state wants is a new form at the start of every year that says, "Are you still going to opt out your child? Here are your rights if you would like to opt into ELL services." But that, that form is sent out every single year at the start of the year, which is something that we are going to start doing. And the last one, SEI teacher endorsement. We have a high-quality teacher team. We are supporting and encouraging teachers to become SEI-endorsed. This one just means that when a student enters our program and they're classified as an ELL student, that when the principal schedules them, they should be scheduling them with teachers who are SEI-certified. So, that's something that we're going to take a closer look at, just to ensure that all students have core academic teachers who are SEI-endorsed. And we do have the majority of our teachers SEI-endorsed. So, this is just, I wanted to share some of my action steps without sharing too much. The first one is an individualized learning plan, and today, I met with Glenbrook Middle School, because we already started filling out one of the learner plans. So, what we want is for every English language learner student to have almost like a form that shares their access scores, their screener scores, and shares some best practices on how that child learns best. For one of our students, that might be that this child is reading at a 700 Lexile score. It might be that they prefer audiobooks in companion with a reading text. It might be that they prefer manipulatives and visuals. So, it will have strategies for the classroom teacher to utilize as soon as that child enters their classroom. So, that way, they're not starting all over, learning the child, that this form would go with our ELL learner. It's very similar to what we have for students who are on a 504, or students who are on an IEP, but now, you have a nice learning plan for your ELL learners as well. We have CKLA. I did, Beth and I are in close collaboration, and our literacy specialist. One of the things that Beth and Brenda showed me is that CKLA has additional resources to differentiate instruction. So, there are separate vocabulary tools that you could use to support English language learners built into the program. On Friday, on that half-day, I'm working with ELL teachers to do some of the CKLA training, just to show them all the resources that are at their disposal. This year, we also provided targeted language support with Lexia English. It adapts to your speech, so students can put on their headphones and talk in conversation with, it's an emoji, but they'll talk in conversation, and over time, the language gets progressively more and more challenging, and more and more rigorous, and we're seeing that our elementary learners love the program, because they're interacting throughout and learning spontaneous phrases, which is great. Documenting, documentation for English language services, that's something that I'm working with Thomas Barrows, our IT Power School person. We want a repository not only to be kept in the CUM file, but to also be stored in Power School. Most teachers don't have access to the student's CUM file. Of course, they can go down to the office and get their student's cumulative folder, but we would love if some of the documents were housed in Power School, so all they would have to do is click into Power School and see all of the data that we have on an English language learner. We want to also leverage Panorama for progress monitoring. So, looking at that quick screen, it would be students that are in the red if they've exited out of the program or scored proficiency. We can quickly glance at their academic achievement, glance at their attendance, their SEL or behavioral data, to see whether or not our English language learners, after they exit the program, continue to be successful. And then, make adjustments if we see adjustments need to be made. For family engagement, we want to increase our outreach to families and really learn about their preferences for communication. I did speak to a family who said, "When I get phone calls, it's really hard for me to listen in and understand everything that's said. However, I prefer emails, because then I can translate it into my home language and then respond." And there's so many AI tools now that can translate relatively quickly. And the last piece is to continue encouraging SEI endorsement and placing teacher, or placing students with educators that are SEI endorsed. And that's it.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you. I'll open for questions and/or comments. I'll kick us off. I had a question.
Yeah.
Or a couple of questions. When you were talking about progress monitoring and how they'd like to see some more informal data systems tracking progress at multiple points through the year, are there any thoughts about what that would be? Would you repeat access testing? Are there other things that they recommended, or is it up to you guys to decide what programs you would use for that?
Yeah. So, it's multifaceted. The first one is, we currently have strong MTSS protocols at every school that already have some benchmark data built in. One of the things that our hope is that we're going to track the ELL learners using some of the internal data systems that we already have, and then use that to make some conclusions about progress monitoring and proficiency. Then, we have Lexia English, which we're going to use for those interim assessments. And then, WIDA has some internal screeners where we could ask a few questions, almost like a mini-access, to see where students are progressing along the way, as a dipstick on their language proficiency. So, it's, it's going to be a combination of including some of the assessments that students also get, and using Lexia English to support us with some of those other targeted supports.
Thank you. That makes sense. I was also curious, you were talking about keeping track of data, et cetera, and you were trying to see about Power School. Does Power School have components for data like WIDA information, testing information, or is that more Panorama? Or do we use something else, like elevations? What is...
So, I met with Thomas Barrows and the Power School administrator, and they showed us an interface that looked very similar for students who are on a 504. It is in addition to Power School, and it will house the home language survey, a scanned home language survey, any opt-out forms for families. So, if they even need to fill it out, you could actually send it via Power School and then collect it. So, I'm thinking of the annual opt-out form. How easy would it be to push out via Power School? Family checks, yes, I want to continue to opt out, and then it's documented right there in Power School. And then, the same with the access scores. There is some, some manual entry that Thomas will have to do, but he said it's no different than some of the other data entry that he has to do for other, you know, specialized populations.
Great. That makes sense.
So, Power School will offer that. Now, with Panorama, I think because of how it's visually displayed, it's very easy to see which students of the ELL population are at risk or are struggling. So, you could create your own group, and for me, I would create my own district group of ELL students, even students that have left out, just to see where across the district they're struggling, and then offer supports as needed.
Okay. Other thoughts and questions? Sorry, I can't. There we go. Michaela, thank you. Michaela?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yep. You're good.
Thank you for the thorough presentation, Nilda. It's always, you always do a wonderful job on presentations. So, I just had a couple of questions. One was, so when you said Panorama is giving the initial screener, that's like aligned with the access assessment?
Well, so I think the question is, Nilda, whether or not it's, it's not actually a Panorama screener, but Panorama houses the information?
Correct. Panorama will house the information, but not give it. We, through the WIDA platform, will give the screener and the access test.
Okay. Sorry, I misunderstood that. That sounded like you were giving an ass screener through Panorama.
No, sorry.
And then, the Say Hello to Lexia English, is this a new program?
Yes. So, we purchased it this year for our students. This year, we had four students enter at a screener Level 1 at Wolf Swamp, and one at the middle level who's entered at a screener Level 1. So, we needed something to supplement things that they're doing in the classroom, but offer some targeted language support. So, we purchased Lexia English. When students go on, that's where it gives them that progressive language development skills. And they could continue to use that platform even at home if they, if they wanted that extra practice.
That's wonderful. And I know, like, I read the report, and in your presentation, it talked about giving more timely assessments. And I think I heard you just say, when you were answering the poll, the Say Hello to Lexia English, it includes also assessments that align with WIDA and the access?
Correct.
Oh, awesome.
And we, I just want to be mindful, and Michaela, you know, you under, you probably, since you're an educator, you sort of understand, I wanted to be mindful about how many times students are assessed, because they're already assessed in so many different ways. So, I do want to think about how many other assessments already exist that give us information on students' language proficiency, and then how many times would we want to give that Lexia English interim, like dipstick on language proficiency, so that they're not over-assessed? But you understand exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah. I was also wondering how many principals and administrators are SEI-endorsed?
All of our administrators are SEI-endorsed.
Oh, great.
Because I think that...
I just, that wasn't here in the report. I know it was talking about the teachers, and then I was thinking, well, I know that that's, I was just wondering about that, because it didn't say anything.
Administrators who directly supervise, teachers who might be serving ELL students have to have that SEI endorsement, I believe.
So, all of our administrators have it, and I, I think, you know, just to speak to that recommendation, I was just candidly disappointed in that recommendation, because of how many teachers we have that are SEI-endorsed. It just so happened that one of the students that they pulled out the file for did have a content area teacher who was not SEI-endorsed, but is now SEI-endorsed. So...
That's awesome. I'm glad I asked that, because, I mean, you're already, it sounds like you're already doing all the things that the report pointed out.
So, when we, you were talking before about Beth coordinating with Westfield State for those programs. Are the programs for SEI endorsement available for educators to take, like, as a collaborative here in our district? Are they going to Westfield State? Are they able to take those at a low or no cost?
They're able to take it. It's a remote course offered online, and I did take it. It's fast, easy. So, I think it's very accessible for teachers who are working throughout the school day, who want to learn a few strategies on SEI, you know, skills, and then get the endorsement and go.
And that's at, that's at no cost to our educators, correct? Through a contract, through a contract that we have with Westfield State.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, that's good.
Very good. All right. You were also talking about messaging home and talking with folks at home. Are educators able to see that request from a parent, maybe, about they would prefer email or some form that is a little bit easier for translation?
Yeah.
Is that something that's accessible for them to see, requests like that?
Yeah. Now, I'm going to make that more accessible. I think for, right now, the way it was being coordinated is you could go to Janine Preston, you could go to your ELL teacher and ask about the child that they see for targeted language support. We just don't want another step for teachers, while they're preparing conferences, to also be going and saying, "What is the language preference for this particular parent?" We want it to be more seamless. So, part of that is coordinating in advance. We know when conferences are going to come up. We know the, the parents' preferences, communicating that to teachers, and then having those translators available for them. It needs to be better, quicker, and easier for teachers to get that information. So, that's part of our action plan.
And the translation program we have now, can you just remind us of sort of what the mechanics of that is?
Yeah. So, we, so we, one, have just a page where families have access to Transfluency, so they could request one, but for the most part, we, in collaboration with families, will ask them, "Conferences are coming. Would you like a translator?" And sometimes, parents say, "No, I'm fine with that one," and other times, they say, "Yes, that would be very helpful," because there's very, we use so many acronyms, we use so many different assessments, that it would be helpful to have a translator there just explaining all of the different things. So, for upcoming conferences, we have three or four families that already have a translator lined up for their conference. And that partnership with Transfluency was, started way before I was here, but it appears to be almost seamless. I called them today, and we already had translators lined up, ready to go for conferences.
There you go. Okay. All right. Any other thoughts or questions? Michaela?
Just one more, sorry.
No, you can...
It's so wonderful to hear about the translation services and how much work you're putting in to make it individualized for the families. And I know also, as an educator, we're always striving for that two-way communication, and it's so important, especially with ELL students and multilingual learners, that their home life and their family are connected to the school. And so, I just wanted to... And so I just wanted to point out that, like, what are we doing beyond translation to make sure that families feel included in other school events, like outside of conferences and meeting about just their child, like the back-to-school nights and stuff like that, to making sure they're accessible for everybody?
Michaela, once again, this is an excellent conversation, and you used something that Desi did say they're going to shift some of their language, instead of English language learners, but multi-language learners, just acknowledging from an asset-based lens that they already have a language. So they're now multi-language learners. So I'm glad that you mentioned that phrase. And then the second part about it is for family engagement. I think that's a passion of mine and a passion of our educators. We do, in Long Meadow, I've noticed a lot of after-school events, plays, weekend communications. There is a lot of family engagement strategies at the building level already. But to Michaela's point, I do want some more targeted support for our ELL families, and that looks a little different than we might have. So the first quick thing is, we've started talking about onboarding. So when a family comes in and they are from a specific background or culture, part of what I would love to do is start to connect them with community resources so that they have a network already started in this. Because it's such a tight-knit community, some of our families are coming in without some of those connections, like either through our Park and Rec program, almost like a welcome kit that has, here's some helpful information for you to learn about Long Meadow, here are some community resources that you can acquire, and believe it or not, I'm partnering with Springfield Public Schools, because they do offer these to their families. And one of my counterparts there is sharing with me some of the tips and tools that they offer their families. So that is in the works, and I'm really excited about that. So the onboarding piece. Then for back-to-school night, one of the things that we noticed is to have a separate ELL back-to-school night, just to share what SEI instruction looks like, what pull-out instruction might look like, just to help them, the same way we would with a parent, with a student, with an IEP, just so that they understand what their child's day looks like. Some of the day, they might be in their general, you know, in the classroom. Other times, they might be pulled out support with a small group of English language learners. So we just wanted them to be sure that they understand their child's profile, and then to deeply explain some of the access scores, which may not be a part of the conferences. They might be working on explaining some of the other skills not targeted to language proficiency. So that's one of the things that we want to improve. And then I would like to come back to the school committee, just to give more information about our English language learners, just to share what languages are being spoken, what families are moving in, where they're working. We're seeing a lot of new families that are working at Springfield College and Bay State Medical Center. So it might mean that I have to think creatively and partner with Springfield College and partner with Bay State Medical Center, just to hear more about how families are getting to Long Meadow and what kinds of supports we could offer them once they're here. So I have a lot of creative ideas, Michaela. They're in the works, and I hope I can bring them all to fruition.
I love the proactive approach.
I was just, like, hitting the love button the whole time you were back there.
Before Nilda departs, I do want, and that last question you asked, Michaela, kind of gave us a chance to highlight it, but the direct personal connections that Nilda has with the dozens of families that are served with the targeted language services. So I just credit and kudos to Nilda for making those direct personal connections. It's sometimes hard as a district-level administrator to do that, but Nilda has managed to do that. And I think they sense that Nilda's office is a welcoming one, and that's important to us, obviously.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Lots of fantastic strategies and plans, and appreciate the update on everything.
There's a, the full detailed report from Desi is in your meeting packet.
I'll draft it, yes.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, moving forward, we have Student Representative Report. Andrew.
Thank you. So just a reminder, spring sports start on Monday, the 17th. And then another reminder, the seniors will be presenting frozen junior, first-year class play this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. We'd really love all of your support. Just help support our class as we get ready for our major events coming up in the spring. And then last week was a major week in the student council world at the Massachusetts Association of Student Council's conference in Hyannis, where Long Meadow did a very strong showing. LHS Junior Kate Carnahan was elected MASC state president, which means she will represent all students who are a part of MASC throughout the next year. Throughout the next year, she'll help run conferences, dinners, and just different MASC events. So it's a really important title, and the MASC is very lucky to have Kate representing them. And then a huge shout-out to Francesca Trotta, who won the Unsun Hero Award. She's the senior class treasurer, and really, her work, I think, should not go unnoticed. She's constantly juggling all these different tasks. She really goes above and beyond just the treasurer role, so I'm very happy to see she was honored with the Unsun Hero Award. And then the executive board, throughout January and February, we were working on the MASC Book of Excellence, which basically just compiles all the work we do, and it allows us to be nominated for this award. And we won the Gold Council Award through the Book of Excellence, which is the highest honor that you can get, and it's really nice to see our council sort of get this representation of all the work we do.
An amazing recognition. Kudos to Kate and Freddie for all the work they've been doing, and very excited for you all. All right, additional report, or any questions or feedback on this? All right. Additional reports. LPVC, Zach.
Nilda Report.
Thank you. SEAL, Michaela.
Yeah, it's tomorrow night, March 12th, there is a SEAL meeting, and you can log in via Zoom, and it's going to be about this upcoming budget and special education. So it's a good one to come to. Tom Mazza will be there, and so will Nicole Pickers.
Nice. All right, wonderful, thank you. And Energy and Sustainability, Estelle?
None.
All right. That brings us to Subcommittee Reports. Finance Subcommittee, Jamie, or Tom?
Yeah, good evening. Finance Subcommittee met last week and reviewed, we had some, we were joined by Principal Landers and Athletic Director Mike Capitasso to continue the dialogue regarding athletic program and the rising costs and the challenges it's having in terms of the financial aspect of the program. And we'll be providing some additional information after looking at some detailed revenue expenditure information for '24, and looking at ways to maybe contain some costs moving forward, specifically regarding transportation. Tonight's agenda, though, does include some items for both recommendation for a vote and also informational. The first item is a consent agenda. We have six building use requests that are in your packet, and I will quickly review them for you. They are a request from the Park and Rec Department for a dance recital on April 28th, May 9th, and May 10th, for the high school auditorium classroom space for various times. The Fitzgerald Performing Arts Program also is requesting the high school auditorium for a musical on April 5th and 6th, again, for varying times. Dance Inc. is requesting the high school auditorium in classrooms for, let's see, I believe we are doing June 12th and June 13th, for those, again, different times for those days. Artistic Dance Conservatory, again, the high school auditorium, classroom and cafeteria on June 14th and June 15th. There is a request from the Recycling Commission for a shredding event on Saturday, June 7th, in the high school parking lot. And Park and Rec has requested Blueberry Hill Gym on May 7th and May 8th for Little League team and individual photos.
All right, thank you. So we have a possible recommended motion?
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approved, the consent agenda for March 11th, 2025, school committee as presented.
Reminder that there is no discussion of items on a consent agenda. We'll do a second first. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Now, reminder that there's no discussion of items on a consent agenda, so if a committee member would like one or more of the consent agenda items to be discussed, we would vote to remove that. Does anyone have a request to remove any of these from the consent agenda? All right, seeing no requests, we will move to a roll-call vote on the consent agenda. Michaela?
Yes.
Estelle?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well.
There are two FY25 financial reports that are included in the meeting packet. They are informational. Finance Sub did spend some time reviewing the information on the revolving account report and the year-to-date budget report projection. These, last time we had a report was about two months ago. Would say that we continue to trend where we would expect. The deficit on the year-to-date budget report is lower than it was two months ago, but is still a small shortfall at this point. But again, I think based on my conservative estimation of expenditures from now until June is probably high, and so I'm not overly concerned in terms of that balance at this point. But we'll continue to monitor expenditures as we progress over the course of the next three and a half months or so. And then the last item is a request for consideration for a grants and special revenue revision. So there are three grants that we are requesting, some revisions to the line item, distribution of the funds. The '25 IDEA grant, no change in the total award, but just some movement, moving around of the appropriated funds. The Title II grant has a small increase of $358, which would be added to the grant total, increasing it to $35,392. And our FY25 Metco grant has an increase of $23,946, increasing that total grant amount to $337,860 for this year. So the total increase to the budget would be $24,304.
That is good. We have a possible motion there?
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approved, the budget revision titled FY25 Revolving Fund Budget Revision Number 2, dated March 4th, 2025.
Sorry, that's the wrong title. It should be FY25 Grants and Special Revenue?
That makes more sense.
Revision Number 2?
Special-
Grants and Special Revenue Revision Number 2.
Yep, revision titled FY25 Grants and Special Revenue?
Grants and Special Revenue Revision Number 2.
Revision Number 2, dated March 4th, 2025.
Okay, we now have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
One second, though.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Michaela?
Yes.
Estelle?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And yes for me as well.
And me, yes.
Oh, Jamie, I'm sorry.
Forget about me, it's all right.
And Jamie, so now yes for everybody. All right. Before we head into ongoing business, we're going to duck backwards slightly towards superintendent for an update on an event from earlier today.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the chance. So, school committee and the community was copied on an email today. We described a really troubling event from Williams Middle School earlier today. Specifically, there was an anti-Semitic graffiti was scrawled on a restroom wall, large print, said Heil Hitler, and obviously antisemitism and all forms of hate and bias and discrimination really don't line up with who we are, who we want to be, line up with our values and our strategies and our plans. And I think it really tells us that all of the ongoing commitments that we have to address hate and bias and discrimination really have to continue. That it's important that we retain those commitments. The professional, targeted professional development that we've recently done with staff, the opportunities for students to create safe schools themselves. At the middle schools, for example, they are designated no-place-for-hate schools, and it's a specific ADL program that allows students to plan and develop events that combat discrimination and hate and bias. And so all these things need to continue, the resources that we've made available to parents, the reporting mechanisms that we've explained to the community. All of these things, obviously, need to continue. It was a really troubling incident today. We wanted to communicate it kind of boldly and transparently to the community, and that's what we did. It is an incident that the Long Meadow Police are assisting us with an investigation on. And we, you know, will continue to take it seriously. We'll continue to investigate it in the days ahead. But these are things that, obviously, again, remind us that our commitment to creating safe schools, our commitment to combating hate and bias and discrimination, and our commitment to creating inclusive, safe spaces has to continue. And it was a, you know, sad, unfortunate, and disturbing event today, but it will, our work will continue in this area. And I know that's important to the school committee, and, you know, I appreciate the support of the parents and staff and the wider community in trying to create places where everyone feels valued and respected and safe. So happy to update the committee further on that as more information becomes available.
Thank you. Appreciate the update on that. Definitely a heartbreaking, and as you said, troubling event, and appreciate our administrators and staff and the Long Meadow Police for continuing to move that forward, and hope that we are able to continue moving forward with kindness and tolerance and as a community. All right, we are headed into ongoing business, which brings us to the middle school building project. An update there.
No specific updates. There is a meeting tomorrow evening. The schematic design work continues. The JWA continues to meet with our administrative team tomorrow. Build a Committee will take a look at some of the mechanical systems and the geothermal systems that are planned for the building. We will, we're in the process of putting together an RFQ for a construction manager at risk. We expect to issue that in the weeks ahead, and it will give us an opportunity to really identify a qualified construction partner for the middle school project. We really hope to have sort of a specific estimate in probably a month or so, and that's a figure that we would then go to residents in the fall with to hopefully secure a vote for the full project scope and budget. So we remain on track, and it remains an exciting, fruitful project. So we'll keep you posted.
All right, thank you. New business, school choice.
So the next two items relate to identifying the number of school choice and/or Metco slots that we would accept for the '25, '26 school year. And these two items can sort of be taken together. Tonight, after some contemplation with the administrative team, and Mr. Mazza and I looking at enrollment patterns, we would recommend to you- and I looking at enrollment patterns, we would recommend to you the, um, accepting three Metco students at the kindergarten level and three school choice students at grade five. There is, um, and some enrollment information in your meeting packet that would help us explain sort of how we arrived at those numbers. If you have anything in particular you'd like us to highlight, or if you have any questions, um, we are certainly open and available. Also included in your packet is some general information about the Metco program and it's, it's how it is, um, organized and funded in the state of Massachusetts. Long Meadows long had a commitment to the Metco program as a way to, uh, increase diversity and, and, um, reduce racial isolation and expand opportunities for students from nearby School choice, uh, we're recommending three at fifth grade, uh, kind of in relation to the size of the overall cohort. You'll see in your meeting packet that we have 180 students at fifth grade. It's one of the smaller cohorts in the, um, at the elementary and the middle level. And so we think that, uh, by, we can safely add three school choice students to the fifth grade in a way that would not increase operating costs or cause us to, uh, have to hire new staff. So we're very confident that by adding three choice students, uh, at fifth grade, that we can, we can accommodate them with existing staff and existing classes. And then at Met, the Metco recommendation comes, uh, at the kindergarten level. Again, we're anticipating a, a small cohort of students at the K level. Right now projected to be 163 students. It's one of our smaller cohorts that we've seen in many years, if perhaps lowest in anyone's memory, frankly. Uh, and so we think that we can safely, um, support three Metco students at that K level in a way that wouldn't cause us to, uh, that wouldn't impact existing services or programs or staffing. So, uh, for your consideration, we're happy to dive deeper into some of the, uh, enrollment information that is in your packet that led us to that recommendation for you tonight.
All right. We would have two possible motions if anyone would like to make those, and we can discuss each. We'll start with school choice.
I move the School Committee approve of opening seats for the school choice students in the 2025, 2026 in the following grades and number of seats per grade. Grade five, three seats.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Is that right?
Yeah.
Second.
You're looking at me like I said wrong.
Thank you. All right. Any discussion related to school choice seats? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Um, Michaela?
Yes.
Estelle?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Jamie?
Um, yep.
Yes. And yes for me. It was grade five, three seats, correct?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just had a comment. I wasn't listening to whatever you said. Do you have any discussion? I did have one question.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Still ask a question.
It's okay. I'll ask it on the Metco.
Okay.
And then we can tie it back in.
Okay.
So, uh, so Metco, uh, so I move that the School Committee accepts students in the Metco program for the 2025, 2026 school year in the following grade level in numbers. Kindergarten, three seats.
Yes, we'll see. Okay. Um, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, just a discussion on the, on the, um, why, like on fifth grade or kindergarten? Why that number? Is it just a random number? You, why not four? Why not five? I, I don't.
Yeah.
Cause you have 180 students in grade five, the next grade's 199, the other ones are not, like, why wouldn't you do five?
Some of it relates to the number of students that are graduating from the school choice or Metco program. So we're, um, there are two students currently enrolled in 12th grade who will graduate, and then there are three students in school choice who will graduate, so.
So you're adding one total student in this program?
Right. Correct. Combine it when you take the two together, correct?
Okay, so you were just trying to keep that on.
Keep it a, a steady commitment to school choice and Metco.
Okay, I got it. I just didn't quite follow.
And as enrollment patterns shift, we have in the past, sometimes revisited a number to add seats. So if we find that there's more space as we get a little closer into kindergarten registration, then like.
We also have taken into consideration the number of sections we have in each grade. And in fifth grade, we have three in each building.
So that would put us?
That would kind of put us out of our, our, each section, so without tipping us into possibly needing staffing.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Any other questions and/or discussion related to? Seeing none, we'll move to vote on Metco students. Michaela?
Yes.
Estelle?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. All right. Thank you. Moving forward then to remote participation at public meetings. So I think by now we've heard me say about 8,000 times, um, the little thing at the beginning about how we can continue remote meetings through March 31st, 2025. It is March 11th. We are rapidly approaching that. Um, have we gotten any very recent updates from the state?
No very recent updates.
No, we have not. Okay. So, in, in lieu of not having any recent updates on that, um, the School Committee may have received for Agenda 11, um, an email related to the, um, Select Board currently passing, um, a vote. Uh, February 24th, the Select Board unanimously voted to adopt a remote meeting participation policy, which could also be adopted by other appointed boards and committees, and it, um, accepts the provisions outlined in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20D, allowing for remote participation, provided that all participants, whether in person or remote, are clearly audible and that a quorum, including the chair, is physically present at the meeting location. Um, we have in front of us a possible version of that for our own School Committee. Would you like to speak to that a little bit more? And talk with the attorney?
No action. I'd recommend not taking any action tonight. Um, really want, I think it's best to make this informational tonight, and as Nicole said, the, if the state does not extend the COVID era remote participation rules, we would need to come up with a policy that permits a hybrid meeting. But if the old rules prevail, a quorum of the body would have to be physically present. That means four committee members would have to be physically present, and whoever is chairing the meeting would have to be physically present. So the, the Select Board policy that's in your packet provides for that. You can be, um, more restrictive in terms of your remote participation requirements. You can't be less restrictive, though. So, um, to, and we're, we're still doing some work with our attorney on this, and our attorney has reviewed the Select Board policy and has indicated that, um, the School Committee in this instance is sort of under the purview of the Select Board in terms of, they're under the purview of the, the town in terms of how public meetings are conducted. So it's important that, uh, you review that Select Board policy, some version of it. You know, you, you can be more restrictive than that, um, but some version of that would have to be considered at your March 25th meeting if the legislature doesn't change the remote meeting law. We expect that they will. They have, you know, recently kind of waited till the, till the 11th hour to extend the COVID era rules, and maybe they'll do that again. But if they don't, we have to be prepared to kind of develop a policy that falls under the Select Board policy.
All right. So thoughts on where we are with that now? We do still have some other meetings scheduled between now and the expiration of those. So as mentioned, we don't have to come to any kind of decision on this tonight, um, but just an opportunity for folks to ask questions and/or make comments related to these policies. Michaela?
Yeah, I read the Select Board's policy, and I thought it, I mean, it seems reasonable to me if, um, you know, making sure that the information is presented ahead of time, or if it isn't, that it's presented during, um, and I, I don't think it should be any more restrictive because, um, I'm at, for me, as a mom of young kids, it's like tonight, I, Brendan just locked in the door now at 7:34, and I've been in the meeting and watching my kids. So I feel like it would, um, kind of discriminate against certain people if it, if we couldn't continue this way. I know it's obviously not ideal, it's better to be in person, but it makes it easier for certain people.
Yeah.
So basically, we can all just drop our kids off at Michaela's house?
Yeah, sure. I'm married.
I'm just messing with you. I agree. I think, I, I don't see how they don't change it, but I, I say we wait until the 25th. This is fine with me, too. I think it's very reasonable. If they don't, then we're just gonna have to make sure we're a little bit more coordinated on, cause we're gonna have to have a quorum here every time.
Yep.
Obviously, you're gonna have to be here every time, Nicole, based on that. So, but, I mean, I, I think we can, we'll figure this out. Even if they don't change it, I think we can make it work, so.
I would say I hope, uh, for a number of reasons, both for access for all of our com- uh, committee members, but also for access for community members, um, being able to access meetings virtually and participate without having to come all the way into the building has been really helpful for a lot of different committees.
I can't see them. I say we wait instead of worrying about, and then we're worried about on the 25th.
The, one thing, just to, for your consideration, again, doesn't need any even discussion tonight or decision tonight, but one of the things that's interesting about the Select Board policy is they have some specific language on visitors that are permitted to be remote versus visitors that would, would be required to be in person. Uh, in talking it over with our counsel, she suggested it really could just be the purview of the chair, that the chair could decide on a situational basis whether or not a petitioner or a guest had to be physically present or could be permitted to be remote, so.
Yeah. Okay. Something for us to look at and consider what we would want our own policy there to be then. All right. Um, any other discussion on this? Seeing none, we move on. Um, consideration of a, um, School Committee representative for the LPVEC. Just checking to see if we want to, um, make any changes on that, um, if we are good through the end of this year. Um, sort of where we are at this point, I'm not 100% sure, um, if we are able to vote in any kind of alternate, um, imposition, but I know that, um, right now i- is sometimes complicated, um, for our current representative to be able to make all of the meetings. So if there's anybody else who would feeling like, I would love to tackle that, um, for a few months as we get closer to the end of the year, um, they're welcome to make that as a possible, uh, motion and, and/or if anybody wants to speak to any concerns related to that. We don't have to make any changes either at the moment.
Nicole, I'm, I'm happy to offer just a, a quick comment, um, as the current LPVEC representative. Um, I've thoroughly enjoyed serving in that capacity, um, but given, um, what we have going on personally at home right now and everything, um, that, that has entailed, it's proven difficult to make it to the meetings, and I know that's created some stress and tension on their end. Um, I'm happy to still try and figure it out, uh, but if there was anybody else from the committee that was interested in participating, they're a lovely group, um, and I'm sure they would welcome your presence.
We appreciate, um, you stepping up when you did Tuesday. That was a, I know that was a mid-year transition when you took it on, um, and really appreciate you, um, rising to the occasion and, and taking care of that, um, and, and serving in that position for so long. Um, is there anyone who feels like they might be able to add that to their plate at the moment? Um, as a reminder, the one we're talking about here would be the Board of Directors, um, which meets at 6:30, um, on a monthly basis. Um, I do not think March is not passed yet, correct, Zach?
No, it's on the 19th.
Okay, so we have, we would still have March then. March, April, May, um, before we would come together again as a board to vote a new representative in June. So it's also something we can think about before we head towards our next meeting, um, and kind of return to, so just folks can put that into the back of their mind for now. Um, and when we are together again on the 25th, we can re-tackle this, um, if it is something folks are interested in, um, you can reach out to Zach, too. Um, he has all the exact dates, um, for the upcoming meetings, um, and see if there's anyone who might want a little bit more information about what those meetings look like. All right.
And just to clarify, he's Board of Directors, I'm Corporation.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So the Corporation one, um, is the one that Adam is doing right now. That meets from 6 to 6:30 once a month, and then the, um, Board of Directors meets at 6:30. All right. Um, consideration of naming?
Sure. I'm happy to take it.
Okay.
Uh, we received, uh, an application, um, from an individual interested in, um, naming a school, a portion of a school facility, uh, in recognition of a, uh, former community member from Long Meadow. This, when we receive an application like this, it requires, your policy requires the School Committee to put together an ad hoc naming of school facilities Subcommittee. Um, it's probably a group that would need to just meet once to review this application and then make a, a recommendation to the full committee. There's very, um, specific and lengthy language in your policy manual about, um, you know, the, uh, protocol that has to be followed, the practice that has to be followed when these applications are received. We probably will need some additional information from the petitioner, which I'm happy to track down for that ad hoc naming of school facilities Subcommittee. So, um, two or three members of the School Committee, if, if, if you're available, um, I'd work with you and Diane would work with you on, on kind of reviewing your practice and your policy and then bringing a recommendation to the full committee.
We have not had one of these in a while. If memory serves me correctly, it's, it's a one, maybe two meeting kind of commitment, correct? Okay. So we need a few people, um, who are willing to jump into a naming Subcommittee. No particular dates on that yet, um, like our other Subcommittees. It would work around folks' schedule. Um, it's a fairly minimal, um, lift to review the application. Who would like to step into that?
Have you already spoken with this gentleman?
Back in the spring, we spoke and, um, really had thought that the, uh, petition wasn't going to go forward, but it surfaced again, just, this is the spring of '24, uh, but the application was just received, uh, a couple of weeks ago, so.
And is he, is, is one of the individuals in there trying to come in and present, or is this just?
I, the petitioner is from Florida, so I, I wouldn't anticipate that the person would be physically present. Perhaps they could zoom in if, they could even zoom into the Subcommittee that's considering the application, if that would be helpful. I'm sure we could arrange that.
Yeah.
Was this the one that we met on before?
No, this is a new one, I'd say, Adam. I don't, I don't think, uh, you, you, this is, this would have been your first time reviewing this application.
Okay, but we met on one before that didn't go anywhere.
This one just arrived, um, just, I think, basically exactly two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
I'll do it, I don't mind.
All right. Michaela? I can jump into that, too. We'll need one more. Get a nice non-every number.
I mean, I thought it was on the naming committee, I guess I could.
All right. There you go.
I didn't realize you kept off of it.
It kind of forms or disintegrates based on need.
All right, so we have Michaela to call. All right.
All right. So that is settled, and that brings us to one final motion for this evening.
Uh, I move the School Committee meet in executive.
with collective bargaining units A, B, C, D, E, F, and H.
Thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Michaela?
Yes.
Estelle?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you. Have a lovely evening. We will reconvene on the 29, uh, 25th.